Carter, who attended the Village Hazelcrest Regular Board Meeting at 7:11. Pledge of Allegiance, Trustee Rias.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick, Wiseman, roll call, please.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Ramsey.
Present.
Trustee Rogers.
Present.
Trustee Moore.
Present.
Trustee Rias.
Present.
Trustee Slate.
Here.
President Osberry.
Here, we have a quorum. A prayer, please.
Let us all stand. Heavenly Father, we thank you once again for another day. We thank you for the opportunity to come before you in asking your grace and mercy as we serve the citizens of Hazelcrest. Lord, we thank you for the little break that we had in the month of August. We are ready to go to represent the community as we always have. And, Lord, we want to thank you for First Lady Osberry being back with us. We thank you for her complete and total healing. We thank you for all blessings in your name. Amen.
We do have a remote station from Trustee Grant. Do we have any correspondence?
No, President Osberry.
And then we have a presence report. First thing I have here is a proclamation recognizing the month of August, which was here, as Minority Donor Awareness Month in the Village of Hazelcrest. Whereas the Village of Hazelcrest and our community continues to confront the challenge for organ and tissue donation, and whereas awareness of a positive donation culture and practice is a powerful way to save and enhance the lives of many people as possible through organ and tissue donation among all people regardless of race, color, culture, class, language, faith, age, gender, sexual preference, or other apparent differences. And whereas August 28, 2018 marks Minority Donor Awareness Month, and whereas during this period between August 1, 2018, and August 31, 2018, Gift of Hope will sponsor projects and programs to create greater awareness and consciousness of the need to register to become an organ and tissue donor. Days of dialogue, artistic and cultural events, donor registration drives, and special activities for all communities. And now, therefore, I, Bernard L. Osberry, Jr., President of the Village of Hazelcrest, County of Cook, State of Illinois, hereby proclaim August 2018 Gift of Hope Minority Donor Awareness Month in the Village of Hazelcrest, and urge all citizens to support the program and project conducted in the spirit of organ and tissue donations during this season, and honor the organization of these activities on their commitment to create a positive culture about organ donation and tissue. Signed this day, 11 September 2018, Bernard L. Osberry, Jr. We do in our communities' need, especially minority communities' need, to actually be aware that donating your organs is a critical issue in our communities. A lot of people, because of not true facts, are fearful of actually signing donor cards. But I could tell you that I've known a lot of people who have been saved by kidney, heart transplant. Those things are a significant need within our community. So we've got to get off that fear of actually donating our organs and be more proactive in our communities. We can save a lot of lives. Thank you. At this time, we're going to honor... You know, we had a wonderful Hazelnut Fest, right? Y'all agree?
Absolutely.
And so, when we did not get around, we had so much fun. We got to give the trophies out. King, queen, princess, and prince of the Royal Court of the Hazelnut Fest. Could the Royal Court of the Hazelnut Fest please come forward here, please? Give them a round of applause. Okay. Turn this on around here, right here. Can the board come down here also? Come on down here, out front. I get tired of shooting over at this guy. Let me look short. Mary, come on that. So, our king... Our king is Mr. Chelsea Lockwood. Queen is Jana Franks. Our prince, Troy Franks. Our princess is not here yet.
She's on the way.
Zaria Holloway. So, first, we had gift certificates for them. That's what we wanted to do. This is real money. One for you? And then, Mr. King. There you go, sir. Prince. I really want to thank you for participating because it's really hard to get, sometimes to get young folks involved. I want to thank the parents, grandparents, and family for actually getting them out there and getting involved and actually really dealing with the people. You know, sometimes kids can tend to be shy, but you guys were not shy at all. You're a foreign matter of fact. So, it was a great, great Hazelnut Fest. Well, makes it even better that I do participate in the Hazelnut Fest. So I want to thank you guys for really participating, and not only that, coming to the dinner and just being out there, it makes us all proud of you. So, congratulations, and continue to do what you do, all right? I don't want to get the 20 going to block anybody after Charles. Thank you so very much.
Straighten your face, girl.
Straighten your face, girl. Send that to us. Thank you so much. Chief, did we do the shared principles once before?
We're actually going to sign it tonight.
Okay. Another item on our agenda is to adopt the shared principles of Hazelcrest Police Department. Chief, why don't you explain a little bit about this?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're going to bring this out front just a moment. The Illinois Police Chiefs Association and the Illinois NAACP spent about three years coming up with 10 shared principles. And the 10 shared principles that they should be common sense about law enforcement and communities of color agreeable. And they're basically about the treatment of one another. And once again, it goes both ways, not just the police to the community, but the community to the police. The first one is that everybody's life is valuable. The next one is dignity and respect. Everybody deserves that. We're going to reject discrimination, and we're going to... The six pillars that the president's task force came up with, we're going to support those, and also the procedural justice portion of that. Community policing, relationships between law enforcement and communities, and it just goes on to talk about we should be working together. And there are 10 shared principles that we came up with, once again, with the NAACP. And what's happening now is, since it's been signed by those two entities, law enforcement agencies actually, it's spread all around the country now, are signing on to accept these principles for something within your respective police department. So, you all sort of the Hazelcrest Police Department all have copies of this. We have covered it with everybody, and these are the expectations that I have of them as the chief. Most of this stuff we're doing already, but it's always good to make sure that we're on the same page, everything. So tonight, the Illinois Chiefs and NAACP actually sent us a poster, and what happens is each chief signs off on it, and we're going to have that poster posted in the lobby of the village hall to let the community and everybody know that we are in agreement, the board, the mayor, and everyone on the 10 shared principles. So that's what tonight is, the actual signing of that poster.
All right, so we'll sign that tonight, and I want to thank NAACP and the National Illinois Chiefs Association.
Yes, sir.
We're actually bringing this forward. And also what they've done, we had an event, we brought them here to Governor's State University, they actually did a seminar on the 10 principles, and we had all the chiefs from the region come together, along with school principals, mayors, and administrators to discuss these principles that we want to stand by. So, thank you very much.
Yeah. And I think it's extra special that today is actually 9/11.
Yes, it is.
With all that we have to remember, as far as our first responders, our concern, I think that makes this even more special as well.
A little bit more, Chief, come in. Thank you.
I ain't trying to be nobody, though.
Okay, I was here first, so look here.
9/11. Seventeen years ago, we had an attack on the country, our country, and we should never forget. So at this time, I ask for us to stand for a moment of silence.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to present. Pretty much, a lot has been going on, powered with this key degree. Definitely, once again, congratulations on a successful hazelnut. It was one of my first, so I really appreciate that. I was able to walk in gray. I wasn't letting the mayor beat me. So afterwards, I passed out, but it was okay. It was really wonderful. Also, I've had the opportunity to participate as well as Assistant Village Manager, Dr. Roshan workshop held by Congressman Ross Chilly. It was just phenomenal. So, we'll be following up with some of the federal agencies to see how to better support the Village of Hazelcrest, that we move forward with a variety of projects. Particularly, we had a follow-up with the Army Corps Engineers, Assistant Village Manager, jury, and I, about actually securing some funds to move forward with some of the projects here. So we just need to make sure we get that in pipeline accordingly, and we'll be working with Ross to make that happen. In addition, I do appreciate the comments about Chantilly, and one of the things that the police chief and I, as well as some trustees and others, we have been actually trying to brainstorm around how we can explore some revenue enhancement measures. So that will be forthcoming as well, because if we're going to hurt them in the pocketbook, maybe that will modify the behavior accordingly. And I just want to also thank the staff, as well as we went through our auditing process for our comprehensive annual financial report. We're not complete yet, nevertheless, we are, you know, almost there, and I really appreciate the commitment, support, and the responses to our auditors in that process. And then, that's pretty much what I'll leave with. Just one more point. We did have a couple of meetings as well with, you know, Advocate Hospital and, you know, looking at some things moving forward, but that will be more information will be revealed later, at a later date. That's forthcoming, and so we greatly appreciate that. And then also, I just want to also commend the board. You took action before I was able to get here as village manager, and I commend you all, because I had my first pinche board meeting with the fire department, and the measures that you all took and put in place, as well as for the police, is commendable. So greatly, I greatly appreciate that, and I'm sure they greatly appreciate that as well. And I'm going to leave it with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any legal?
Nothing that we need to talk about right now.
Police.
Thank you, Mayor, board, citizens. Just a couple of things to bring you up to date. We just went through a testing process for our new hires. We actually had quite a good turnout. We had 80 applicants show up to the testing that we held at Hillcrest High School. And the first portion of the testing is a physical agility test. Out of those 80 people that took the physical agility test, 36 passed, which qualified them to take the written test later on that afternoon. And out of those 36 people that took the written test, 24 passed. And we've done background checks on about 12 of those folks now, and as of yesterday, two of them started at the Chicago Police Academy. So, we have one person that will be graduating from the Chicago Police Academy on the 21st of this month. Both she and another gentleman that's here, a new officer here that came in as a lateral hire, will be here at the next board meeting, so we can recognize them with a formal swearing in. We're going to be sending four more people to the Police Academy in January as we continue to go through this list of applicants, and we will try to get ourselves up to speed with those numbers. That's all I have, sir.
Okay. We're going to take a break and action here for a second. Our princess has just walked in the door.
How many do we have?
This Holloway.
Thirty-six. Thirty-six.
How many do we have?
Twenty.
Come on up here, ma'am.
You get the stage all by itself, isn't that what?
Turn to all the people in the hallway. So I want to congratulate you on actually participating in the Hazelfest, and how you feel?
I'm happy.
It was a pretty cool opportunity.
So cute.
Right here, your trophy. Here goes money. You got to get the whole four people one more time to get this party together. Got to bring your trophies up. Congratulations again.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees, directors, and residents of Hazelcrest. You may have noticed, we have identified about 10 streets that we're going to have... Excuse me, I take that back. We have identified nine streets that we have scheduled for resurfacing for this year. The streets that will be resurfaced, residents may notice that there is a red no parking sign on that street. That sign only applied to, with some question about when that sign goes into effect, it only applies during the time that they're doing work on your street. So if no work is taking place on your street, you don't have to worry about not parking on your street. In addition, I just received notification that the Village of Hazelcrest has been awarded the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Award from Cook County, which will include resurfacing of deteriorated pavement and replacing to meet ADA compliance. The streets, excuse me, the sidewalks that will be impacted will be Page Avenue, 168th Street, 270th Street, Charleston Lane from Wood Street to Park Avenue, Weston Avenue from 169th Street to 270th Street, Crane Avenue from 169th Street to 170th Street. We recently had a new pump installed in our California lift station. That's the lift station right at 175th and California. So now we have two fully workable pumps in that station, which I'm very excited about, because if one of our pumps gone, you may have noticed that we have to bring in one of our mobile pumps to help address, making sure that we keep the water levels correct over there. We also is in the process of completing repairs to fire hydrants that were identified as having problems in our 2017 maintenance report. We have all the fire hydrants replaced. We're just waiting on a few parts to repair, maybe a couple of the other fire hydrants. We continue to address landscape and restorations throughout the village. I think we completed about 28 restoration in the last few months, which would also includes the pretty large water main break that we had next to the library. We will continue to asphalt various streets throughout the village. You may have noticed some streets we had to block off, because our crews are actually asphalting, cutting and grinding, and then placing new asphalt to help maintain those We, Public Works, excuse me, with the exception of three employees, all of our Public Works staff has completed CPR and AED training, which is real good from a safety standpoint, so that if any of our employees or we're able to provide assistance if someone goes into cardiac arrest or is having a heart attack. The Public Works team completed Irma Fall Protection Training, essentially giving guidelines and best practices for how to prevent falling from, if you're working as far as a bucket, while you're cutting trees, or if you're on a roof or facility doing works, it's very important that they know how to maintain their safety. So everyone in Public Works has went through that training. Last but not least, since we're referring to hazelnut, I just wanted to say, you know, thank the guys in Public Works for helping to make 2018 hazelnut, I think, a success, as well as the team here. I know our guys came in for Public Works, you know, they had to work overtime and long hours throughout the day, and from the directors and everyone here, you know, they had nothing but complimentary things to say about the crew and Public Works. So I just want to acknowledge the work that they did in helping to make hazelnut 2018 a success. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I have a question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Saria, could you please identify those nine streets that are going to be resurfaced? Could you name them?
Yes, I can, ma'am. Michael Court, Edgewater Drive to the Culversack, Central Park Avenue, Birchwood Drive to Laurel Lane, Locust Drive, Chestnut Drive to Laurel Lane, Maple Lane, Woodworth Place to Elm Drive, Woodworth Place, Central Park Avenue to Elm Drive, Oak Street, Elm Drive to Maple Lane, Hazel Lane, Elm Drive to Woodworth Place, 172nd Street, Holmes Avenue to California Avenue, and Central Park Avenue, 175th Street to 177th Street.
And that woodwork, is that the woodwork at Potawatomi or the woodwork in the Highlands?
Pot Hills. Yeah, Pot Hills, correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Inspection Services.
Thank you, President. Good evening, trustees and citizens. Have several items. I just want to, I gave the trustees update of inspection service status report concerning service recall, new businesses and businesses coming for August and also up to September 10th, up to yesterday. Also tomorrow, a meeting with the reps of RV Home Horizon. They're going to give me an update on the new homes that's going to be brought in on 169th and O2 Dixie Highway behind because of new management coming in. They're supposed to take out at least nine or 11 homes there to replace them.
The mobile homes.
The mobile homes there. Also, tomorrow morning, I'm in court for 169 shade. The house has been applied upon the community because of overgrown vegetation and disrepair to the house and the garage, so it's a status follow-up for that. And concerning our new code enforcement officer, I mean, opening rather, we've done inspections and we've done interviews for the new code enforcement officer, and we just initiated that, that's the replacement for Rich, which moved to a closer position near his home in Eldon. So that ends my report.
All right, thank you. Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. President, board of trustees. I just have a few things. With respect to human resources, I'm still working with RSM and Whitley to complete the annual audit. Mr. Manager just spoke about, you know, we're toward the end, but we're not quite there. I'm also working with Irma to complete the 2019 revenue base worksheet. I am actually in the middle now of preparing the census for the Horton Group, which is our benefits broker, in preparation for the December open enrollment for employees. We have had a number of new hires and a number of people that have moved on within the last three or four months. So HR has been pretty busy with HR orientations, benefits enrollments, COBRA offerings, termination of benefits, and all of that stuff. It has been a very, very, very busy summer. I'm also working with the Police Department, Public Works, Community Business Relations, and Inspection Services with recruiting. There's a part-time records clerk position that's being advertised, seasonal maintenance worker, pace driver coordinator, and code enforcement inspector position. We have made an offer, and I'm sure Carolyn will probably speak to that, to the driver coordinator candidate, and we are actually making an offer for the code enforcement inspector position as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
And can I just, in addition to that as well, Ms. Gray has set up several managerial training that our staff will take place in the next couple of weeks through our benefits.
You set that up, sir? Then you take that, girl.
I was a joint effort, so thank you.
Thank both of you. Community Business Relations.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for helping participate in the Hazelnut Festival. Special thank you to our mayor, the board, and all our departments and residents. I also want to let everyone know that Ben Ramsey, our Hazelnut chairman, did an outstanding job. He worked day and night to try to make this a successful event. So many thanks to him. On August 15, the village held a career fair, trade fair, and we had over 100 participants. The mayor, they wrote him up in their trade magazine, because they have not had a turnout as well as Hazelcrest in several years. So another caduce to our mayor for allowing us to have a career fair was his idea, his trade fair, and we had over 100 participants that got information about the trades. That was a great success. On Wednesday, August 19, we're having a celebration for our beautification awards. We're going to do it a little different this year, because most of the time, normally we have them come at a board meeting, but this time, we're going to do a special presentation luncheon for them in the evening, just to come up for everyone who received a beautification award. It's something special just for them, so if you're welcome to come out and join us. It will be here in the boardroom at 6:00 PM.
When is that again?
On the 18th.
On what?
September 18. Okay. September 19 is a big, big celebration for our residents from 90 to 100 years old. We're going to celebrate life. Give them, let them smell their roses while they can smell them. We have a lady 103 years old, still take the bus, go get her hair done every week, and so she should be commended. So we're having a luncheon at 11:00 AM on Wednesday here in the senior room. On the 29th of September, I don't know if you all saw the card, but it's National Family On the 29th of September, I don't know if who all saw the card, but it's National Family Fitness and Health Day. This is the month for fitness and health, and we're having, the Kids Health Club Foundation is working in conjunction with South, Advocate South Suburban Hospital, and we're having a National Family Fitness and Health Day. It's going to be behind the Advocate South Suburban Hospital. They have a health track back there, starting at 8 o'clock registration, and it goes from night until 12 o'clock. There's all, all kind of enjoyment. We have a helicopter coming in, we have games, we have a contest for five-year-olds and under. There's a walking starting at 9 o'clock for family members, and there's a chair massage, which is something I'm looking forward to. So we ask everyone to please come out. You could go online and register for this event. This is the first time we're holding this, but it's something we're very excited about. Also, just want to give you a brief update. I attended Metro train station meeting, and they're working hard to try to meet a deadline this year. Metro, they, they ran into a little problem, which threw them off their schedule, but they're back on track now. So please look forward to seeing some construction in that area for a period of time, but they will have notices up, but we are proud to say that they are moving forward with the metro station. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I'm sure they can pass some cards out. They need some cards for the National Health Fitness Day. Fire Department, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else want to talk?
I was going to make you laugh, but...
Basically, just a couple things here. CPR and AED, we purchased a couple of months ago, several new routines for AED, and they'll be strategically placed throughout the village. And all of the employees that don't have training, the training's been 75%, 75% complete. So all we have to do is catch those and just early in training, and we'll be complete. And that line was September 30th, and I think we're going to meet that deadline. So now all these units that we have in the building throughout the village, every village employee will know how to operate that. And we did, as we found out in the payables, that we did take delivery on a new station vehicle. It's in the process of having equipment installed, and you'll probably see it on the street in a week. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Chief. Economic Development.
Good evening, Mayor, and to each of you. The Economic Development Team has met with the following companies who have expressed interest in expanding their businesses within the village of Hazelcrest, or just maybe perhaps bringing their businesses. And they have just been exploring different locations and options, and we've been coming up with some different strategies that may fit us well. And so during the month of August and September, basically, we've met with over 13 new businesses, potential new businesses that are interested in coming. I'll provide the board with a list of those and keep you abreast of, you know, what's going on as it relates to them coming into the village. As it relates to those that we have redevelopment agreements with, like AP Deli, they are actually, their permit is being issued on tomorrow. I spoke with Inspection Services, so they'll be getting their permit issued, and you'll be seeing that development process, you know, just starting to work its work on 170th. So we're excited about that. And then also, Armani Liquors, Armani Liquors, we're waiting on their license to come through as well. So they're excited about it. We have a lot of great things happening within the village, and we're just super, we're really looking forward to it. In our efforts to redevelop our entry and exit points in the village, we have also met with the following business owners within the village who have 25 years or more vested interest to discuss possible redevelopment opportunities. So for those businesses that sat at our corners, we're talking to them about redevelopment and things of that sort, so that we can upgrade, help them to upgrade, and reinvest back into those businesses as well. So we have already met with Oasis B. Fuck Ruby Thielen, who's been there almost 40 years. And so we're looking to help her to do some things to just kind of brighten up her, her corner as we get ready to start this whole redevelopment process. And then RT Automotive at 167th and Dixie, them as well. So we'll be working on the, on the Hazelcrest proper end of town first, and then we'll move along throughout the village to continue those efforts. And then on today, I had a meeting with Dominic Tassi, who was the Deputy Director for Cook County Economic Development, who talked to us about, he invited me out, actually, to talk to me about funds that were available through Cook County, and he believes that Hazelcrest is a great place to invest in. We are one of the few towns that are not landlocked. And so they've expressed a great interest in helping us to redevelop some of our areas. So those talks were, went on, I had an hour scheduled meeting with them, and they went on for about three hours today. And so at the end, at the conclusion of that meeting, we came up with the fact that they would be coming out here to take a tour of Hazelcrest, look at our TOD areas, and then see what we could do collectively to bring some funds in to help us redevelop the areas that are needed. And so we are excited. Economic Development has been working hard to just make sure that we're attracting the businesses that fit into our strategic plan as well as support our community at large. So thank you. That concludes my report as it relates to economic development. Sure. And so as it relates to the construction projects that we have within the village that we are working on, most of you know that we are in the midst of revitalizing a building that the village purchased at 3601 West 183rd Street to be the new home for our new municipal complex. And so in our efforts to do so, there's been a lot of planning underway to just get to a point where we have actual preliminary renderings and drawings available that we're getting ready to release to the community. As well as the building at 17065 Dixie, which used to be the former South Suburban Hospital, that building is scheduled for demolition, and you should see it demolished by the end of the month. The abatement process is already taking place, and we're moving forward with that. So today, I want to share with you all just some renderings that we have, and they're preliminary, but we want to share them with you all so that you know that this process is underway and the village is moving forward. Okay? So the easel was worth taken today, so we didn't get a chance to display them, but we'll leave them up here so that you can see. But this particular one is going to be our new village hall, and this is going to be located at 3601 West 183rd Street. So this is a preliminary rendering of it, but it's a very close...
You can pass around. It's not that many people here, so...
...of what we will be, you know, building.
You can let them pass around. Your audience.
And then this is the backside of it. We still have some work to do in the backside, which faces the lake, but there's still some work to do in this building. There'll be some banquet facilities that will be virtual weddings and such. So it'll be a nice place for the village at large. And then this, this particular rendering here is the professional building that we're building at 17065 Dixie Highway, which used to be our former South Suburban Hospital, believe it or not. So we're actually taking that building down to the ground, leveling it, and then putting up a prefab building that will look like this. So that will be a nice, bright building on that side of town. And then that's just a new, just another rendering, so that you can actually see what's So again, the construction team meets every Wednesday here at the village, and so we are excited about what we're presenting. We're very cautious about, conscientious about budget and all the, all of the aspects that are considered when actually doing a construction project. So we'll be giving you information on a monthly basis as it relates to our build-out, and we look forward to doing a groundbreaking ceremony very soon.
Thank you so much. At this time, we're going to open the floor for public participation for items that are on the agenda. Anything that's on the agenda that we want to address, which is the only thing on there is the payables. You can dress now. Can I get a motion to open for public participation for items on agenda?
I move that we open for public participation for items on the agenda only.
Second. By trustee Ramsey, second by trustee Moore. All in favor?
Aye.
So if you see something on the agenda, which, only thing on right now is the budget, I mean, the payables, you come and talk about that, but we will have you speak again when we read the payables. So if you, if it's not on the agenda, if you don't want to talk about the payables, we're going to close and open back up so you guys can talk about any other item, okay? Anybody want to talk about the payables? Can I get motion to close public participation for items on the agenda?
I motion to close participa- public participation for items on the agenda.
Second.
Then move by trustee Moore, second by trustee Arias, to close public participation for items on the agenda. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor. Couldn't hear you. Okay. Penning items, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 24th, 2018. Sandra Slate?
I move to, to approve the regular meeting minutes of July 24th, 2018.
Second.
The move by trustee Slate, second by trustee Ramsey, to approve the regular meeting minutes for July 24th, 2018. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Riz?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slate?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Grant?
Thank you, President Osberry. I move to approve account payable number 19-07 dated August 14th, 2018, in the amount Account payable number 19-08 dated August 28th, 2018, in the amount of $437,820.17. And account payable number 19-09 dated September 11th, 2018, in the amount of $277,668.82.
Second.
The move by trustee Grant, second by trustee Slate, to approve account payable number 1907 dated August 14th, 2018, in amount of $476,787.82. Account payable number 19-08 dated August 28th, 2018, in amount of $437,820.17. And account payable number 1909 dated September 11th, 2018, in the amount of $277,668.82. Any discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Riz?
Yes.
Trustee Slate?
Yes.
And trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Moore?
Thank you, President Osberry. I motion to postpone...
Item C.
To postpone the amendment number one to the agreement dated November 19th, 2015, for the 171st Street Pressure Reducing Value and Water Treatment Station, Design and Construction Engineering.
Second. Then move trustee Moore, second by trustee Arias, to postpone the approved amendment number one to agreement dated November 19th, 2015, for the 171st Street Pressure Reduced Val and Water Transmission, Transf- Station, Design and Construction Engineering. Any discussion on this item?
Yes, we need a date for the postponement. Is it postponed to the next meeting, or is it indefinite?
Yes, to the next meeting.
Yes. Thank you.
Do you postpone to the next meeting? Any more discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Riz?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slate?
Yes.
Motion carries. Can I, can I motion open the floor to public participation for any item to be discussed?
I move that we open the floor for public participation for any items of interest.
Then move by trustee Slate, second by trustee Arias, open the floor for public participation. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
At this point, anyone want to come forward to speak? This is the time to do so.
Good evening, Mr. President, and village trustees, and other officials here. Paula Coffo, 16710 Wood Street. I want to read this, and I've got a copy for both Chief Jackson and Chief Davis. And if, Isaac, if you need a copy, I've got an extra one. "On Saturday, September 1st, about 4:30 PM, I heard the squealing of brakes being applied on a horrific crash. I grabbed my cellphone and looked out my front window. I saw a white van facing east on Wood Street. I heard a woman screaming head by head. I dialed 911 and immediately told the dispatch I was at 167th Street in Hazelcrest. Ambulances were needed due to this woman's cries. The dispatcher asked me to hold while she put through the call to Hazelcrest. As I made my way down the front stairs, I saw a Hazelcrest SUV pull up. By this time, the dispatcher was back on the phone, and I told her the police squad was on the scene, and that I heard the ambulance siren in the distance. The compact car had its passenger side quarter panel and both side doors pushed out. The EMTs got her on a stretcher. The Barkin Police Vehicles kept the traffic from going southbound on Wood. Two of our own units helped cars turn around and go back south, keeping the traffic flowing. The response time for this accident was very quick. Too few times our responders, our first responders are not thought about, but today I am making sure they get the praise they deserve. Well done, first responders. Well done."
Thank you so much, Father.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much to President Osberry and everyone else here this evening. My name is Olivia Fox, and on behalf of Gift of Hope Organ and Tissue Donor Network, we would like to say thank you so much to the Village of Hazelcrest for acknowledging August as National Minority Donor Awareness Month. For those of you who are not aware, Gift of Hope is the Oregon Tissue Donor Network for Illinois and Northwest Indiana. We're responsible for coordinating life-saving and life-enhancing organ and tissue donation with 180 hospitals in our service areas and, and in our service area and nine transplant centers. In addition to that, we're also responsible for public and professional education on the topic of organ and tissue donation, and so that's why we're here today, and we're here to stay. I was able to connect with President Osberry, and he immediately told me that whatever, you know, wherever, whatever Hazelcrest needed from us, you know, we could have, and we need nothing but open arms to come here and to educate your residents and your community about the importance of organ and tissue donation, because we can't make a decision about something if we don't know about the need, and especially in our own community. So again, thank you so much. We will be participating. We're so excited to be here at this event. We will be there in support of the community and the president, and we can, hope to continue to be at every event that we can and support in any way that we can to support this community. So I just want to leave you guys with a couple of facts. Currently in Illinois, there are over 4,600 people waiting for a life-saving and life-enhancing organ tissue donation. Thirty-eight percent of those people are African-American. So it's really important that we understand why these dialysis centers are popping up on every corner in our communities, and African-American and different minority communities, and so that's why we're here. And again, we'll continue to be here and to provide public education. So I think Ms. Carter's going to be my girl. I have my card and my information. We want to be involved and support whatever we can here in Hazelcrest. So thank you again for honoring August as Minority Donor Awareness Month.
Thank you so much, Ms. Fox.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, please.
I have known this young lady and her family since she was little, and it just warms my heart to see her as a donor, such a courageous thing.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Hello to everybody on the board. I've been here before. A lot of you know me. I'm a resident of Hazel, I've been a resident of Hazelcrest for 30 years. And what I'm discussing today, from last year, I had a handful of service requests for mice bait being placed in the alleys. That was...
That was done, for brush pickup, for brush taken down off the corner where the kids are walking past, it was so high and all out into the alley, that it was really a hazard to anyone walking past there. That was done, and it was done very well, so I congratulate Public Works or Inspection Services, whoever did the job. This year, whoever came out to do that corner lot, they must have been in a hurry, because it couldn't have been the same people that were entrusted last year to do the job, because it looks a mess. And we're trying to sell houses on that 169th Street corner, that's across from that lot, and we're trying to sell two houses there, and it doesn't look good to look at all that brush, and they also have brush in the alley instead of in the front of the house, so it could be picked up on brush pickup day. Also, in the alley going north or going south, if you're going south through the alley, you have to swerve around a big old brush that was cut down last year, I don't know where it came from, but it's so big, it looked like it's connecting with the Anthony side of the street with their brush, that's coming from their lot. The residents all received a letter regarding brush pickups from Inspection Services, brush the recycling bins, and garbage can bins, having lids on them, removing them from in front of your house, if that's where you have to place your recycling bins or garbage can bins. That was implemented, but I see a lot of it now, and the only reason why I see a lot of it is I'm retired right now, so I drive around and look, and plus, I walk my alley. Her and I both walk the alley, and that's why I know that the mice bait was implemented, because I saw signs of it. And the brush that was on that corner, that the house had blown up, that was on that corner that was so bad, that was taken care of that year, but this year, like I said, whoever contracted to do that, they did not do a good job at all. It makes our street look bad, which is Orchard Ridge, we're on 16800 of Orchard Ridge, and we, the alley that I'm talking about is right next to Anthony. Anthony and Orchard Ridge share this alley. The people are not coming out, the residents are not coming out to tear down, take off the brush off their fences. I had asked one lady that I would take it down, if she would have someone pick it up, take it to the front on brush pickup day.
So what's we're gonna do? I know about the house that blew, blew up, another big open area there, so we have Inspection Services and Dante from Public Works, they go by there, you familiar with the area, both you guys?
We're looking.
Okay. And we'll definitely take a look at that and look at the bait situation before the weather changes.
Okay.
And so, so look out for them, you know, they'll be there.
Because like I said, going south through the alley, you have to swerve to miss that brush.
And then we're gonna talk to those residents, like you said, we did, we did put notices in residents' doors, and told them they're responsible for bringing their brush pickup around, brush you, and also making sure their garbage containers are closed.
Well, everyone received a letter.
I know. So we, we will enforce that, so we will make sure, we'll go out the process again, we'll make sure we send them another letter, because that's not a hard thing to do.
I think what it is, is that it's not, you know, any consequences behind it.
Well, we, we'll make sure we got some consequences behind it.
Okay, you know I could find you.
I know you can.
She would like to say something.
Yes.
Yes, hi, I live on Orchard Ridge too, and I asked several years ago about having a handicap sign put in front of my house. My husband is disabled, and sometimes I can't park in front of my house, and to get his power chair out of the back of the van is very difficult.
We'll have Inspection Services, there is a process with that, so we'll talk to the police department, and Inspection Services, and they'll come and talk to the family, and we'll tell you what the process is that we have to go through. It is a state process that we have to go through, through that, okay?
Well, that's what I was told at the zone meeting, but he also told me I should come here, and...
Yeah, it was good. Who told you that? No, I'm not told.
Don't tell us.
I won't tell secrets.
No, but we will, we will come, make sure we get by there, and try to get that information we need.
You know, every town I've been in, there's been handicap signs in front of residents, you know.
Yeah, we have to process, process it through the state, so we have to get all your information, and then process it, then they allow us to do that.
Okay.
One last thing, like I spoke with the chief about, we do have the policing, the community policing meeting the third Thursday of every month.
Right.
That needs to be put out again, because evidently, it's not, it's, it's been...
Yeah, a lot of people thought...
Because nobody is coming but about five people, and we're at three of them.
We'll, we always, he's always willing to put that information out, so that's an easy ask.
Let everybody inform their neighbors...
The meeting's still there.
That we're still having a meeting, the third Thursday of every month.
Thank you, and I thank you guys for that, because you guys always have a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name's Greg Washington, I reside at 3425 Maple Lane. I just wanted to inform the citizens of Hazelcrest, the Chicago Area Project will be hosting our, our first annual Hazelcrest Information Lab. We will be distributing information on different projects that are happening throughout the community, different programs that are happening throughout the community, plus we are inviting other organizations throughout the Southland to come and participate, and it's gonna be on September 26, 5 to 6, at the Hazelcrest Park District Building. Thank you.
Be sure you let Carol, Ms. Carter know.
What'd you call it again?
The Chicago, I'm working with the, the Chicago Area Project.
Okay. Like your shirt.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, also, in much lighter news, the Hazelcrest Open Land, we'll be having our, I think this is either our third or fourth annual Johnny Appleseed Birthday Party on June, I mean, not June, but September 29th. I know it starts at 12, and it's to be from 12 to 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I want to thank everyone for coming out today, we are working on some ordinances to address some issues in, in the community, and so we will be working on that, that project. Can I get a motion to close public participation?
I move to close public participation.
A second. Then move by trustee Moore, second by trustee Reyes, all's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Again, I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening, we're doing some great things in Hazelcrest, and, and the issues that we do have, I'm, I'm glad you guys come and let us know about it. A lot of times, people just kind of let things simmer, and then they come, and they're upset, and we don't really know what they're upset about, but we want you to come to the meetings and let us know when there's a problem. We want you to call us before the meetings, if you can, to let you know we have problems, and if we don't take care of that problem at that time, hey, come to the meetings, let us know, keep us on our Ps and Qs, because it's, you know, we're, we're your workers, and we appreciate all of you, most of the time, no, all the time.
Karen?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, you're in the media.
So thank you guys very, very much, Ms. Fox, thank you very much, and I hope you guys come out for the National Health and Fitness Day. We do need to get our citizens moving, especially our young folks, it should be a great event, a lot of fun, we're giving away gift certificates, and we have some great competitions for the youth to participate in, and also for the mature adults. So have a great evening, thank you for coming out, stay Hazelcrest proud. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I motion to adjourn.
Second. Then move by trustee Rogers, second by trustee Slaton, all's in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.